Before I open up for public hearing, as presented by our city manager on item 10.
I would love to hear what the public has to say.
All right, seeing no one wanting to speak at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment on our proposed baleman.
I also served on the Ad Hoc Committee, the Road Committee, and we did come to a consensus to do what we're doing. I was part of that consensus. I do have a question, though, and I looked at the framework that Doug presented, and I'm going to make a suggestion. The $500,000 a year for unpaid roads, if you do the math over 20 years, $500,000 a year, that's a $10 million expenditure over 20 years. And what do you have when we're done is dirt roads. So I'm thinking the first year or two, and I go back long enough to where I remember when the county used to grade the roads out in the park before they were paved. They'd set a grader up on one end, and they'd, you probably remember, Russ, they'd, in a day or two, they'd go through all those streets, all of them. So I'm just, right now, I think, there's no question that we need to do something with our roads. I don't think anybody asks a question about that. This is the way that the council and the committee wants to go, and that's the way we're going to go. So, but when you present it to the public, and when, these are the things they're going to look at, is $500,000 a year, 20 years, $10 million, and you end up with dirt roads when we're done. That's something I would, I brought it up in the meetings, and I want to bring it up now again, is that maybe that should be adjusted. I understand after the last meeting, Chris basically said that we're going to be able to adjust that yearly. The council could adjust it yearly if they wanted to, but I think that presenting it to the public, if you want to sell it, and that's what it's all about now, is being able to get sold, is that something that you ought to look at to maybe reduce that, and when it's presented? And focus on the paved roads now, or possibly even allocate money for some engineering that might need to be done up there. I just went up and looked at a job for a guy up on one of those streets and avenues. His biggest problem was a drainage problem. Putting gravel on his road isn't going to solve that problem, it's still going to be there. So, part of grading these roads, especially up there, and it's even more important than out in the numbered streets, because the soil conditions are so different, they're much tougher in the avenues. We need to think about what drainage and design needs to be done as part of this, perhaps, instead of $500,000 strictly for grading roads, maybe the one time in the first year, after that, it's going to be more of a maintenance issue with hauling gravel up there and fixing them a little bit better, just like your tennis courts. If you keep up with them every year, you don't have to put $40,000 all at once. While the streets, the dirt streets up there are now to the point where you've got to put the big money into them initially. After that, especially if Doug does what he's been talking about, doing hauling all of that re-ground asphalt up there, once that's done, it's going to be more of an upkeep. So I'd like to see it presented to be a little more flexible, and to concentrate more on the paved roads. And I hope that we can get this thing done, because Lord knows we need it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Please.
Ray, Ray, I was going to address your concerns. From the last meeting, we took that, and we have a new revised, revised, so you can actually take it. I'm fine, I'm good. Just wanted to point that out to you, so. And you're right, you're absolutely right. The first year's is going to be the biggest cost, and then after that, it's just going to be a maintenance. So you're going to, you're going to see, one year, two years down the road, you're going to see more money going into the paved roads than the dirt roads. So, basically covers 95 percent of that, it's going to cover all those expenditures that are listed.
Is that why it's not listed now, that the minimum was?
Yeah, we've narrowed it down. We did, we took that, took all those costs out that I put, and that was just a template, just to get started with.
That's the same with the public.
And then we took all you guys' input, and then we come up with this.
Right now, it's all if we get the money. I just, I'm thinking of how it's going to be presented to the voters. It's got to make sense, and Doug seems to be making some adjustments, and I think it would be fair, as part of the presentation, that it be well-known to the voters that the council is going to either have an oversight committee, I understand that's probably, and by the way, I will volunteer myself up for that committee, should you form it.
It's a part of the ordinance. It's a feeling to be a part of the ordinance.
To be against you were on the Ad Hoc Committee, I would think you were first in line.
Yeah. Well, I think if the voters know that the council is going to have some flexibility, and it's going to be a working situation, and then you've got to be accountable. That's the main thing, so. That's all I got. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Mr. Shields.
You know, you said, "These paved roads was put in in 1930. The underlayment of these paved roads is dead." Now, from 1980 to 2016, over the city, not putting together some kind of plan to take care of the dirt roads, the paved streets, and so on and so forth, you're talking about millions of dollars today. And what you're talking about is penny ante stuff. It's not going to do nothing. You're going to have to figure out to put together some kind of road plan and promote it.
Thank you. Actually, for correction, company by Ramus came in in the early '80s and put in a sewer line, and the requirements of that contract was that he had to put back the streets in the condition they were, or better, when the sewer system went in. And it was actually in the early '80s, Lake Shore Drive was repaved, several other streets were repaved, and a lot of the residentials that have sewer lines, main trunk lines running through them, were improved, including the dirt streets.
Yeah, but it does no good.
But just for clarification, Mr. Shields, because I believe it wasn't actually in the 1930s in some of those streets.
These go for grant.
The other thing that I wanted to point out is, we did have a contract, I believe it was with Lane Paving, to do grading on the dirt streets some years ago, and that was a program that really worked well. Unfortunately, that funding source dried up, and we weren't able to continue with the contract. I think that's where some of the bones of this measure came from, because we had seen success in those, in the prior, those prior years. So I just wanted to point that out. Mr. Silva. Pardon? Go ahead, Doug.
Bill, I want to clarify one thing. We do have a pavement management plan. We do have a plan that we try to follow. We just don't have the resources to follow the plan. And the resources, I mean money.
Well, actually, if I may, Mr. Becknell, did you do some research on the amounts of money spent since we incorporated on paved streets, collectors, and so forth?
I did. Not since we incorporated, but since 2006, I went back and looked at the amount of grant money that the city has put together and spent on the roads in the city of Clearlake. It totaled up to a little over $9.6 million over a 10-year time period. So, on an annual basis, if you just take that 9.6 million and divide it over 10 years, that's like $960,000 a year that the city has been spending on roads. Now, most of that, that grant money, as the city manager indicated during his presentation, that grant money is for arterials and collectors, not for the residential streets. So, the reason that our PCI is even at 38 is because of the money that has been spent. So, the city of Clearlake, you know, out of the general fund, has not necessarily spent a lot of money on the roads because of the limitations, but I can assure you that the city staff has gone out and done a yeoman's job on getting grant funds to maintain the roads in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Becknell. Mr. Silva.
The clarification on, when you mentioned Ramus Construction, I used to work for that company. One of the decisions that was made on one of the jobs that they did here, as far as paving the roads go, and this is all part of this tax and having the money available, there was a choice of either ditch paving, just paving the ditch where the pipeline was put in, or, for a little bit extra money, overlaying the entire road. That was a deal that was done actually after the fact, and I was, I was in on some of that. So, as far as when it was done, the dates, I don't really care, but my point is, is that if you have money available to take opportunity when a contractor's in progress, you can get a lot of things done.
Absolutely. I just wanted to bring that up, Ray, because if people were under the misunderstanding that our streets, particularly Lake Shore Drive, use that as an example, is then the condition it's in now from the 19, when it was originally paved, that is incorrect.
Right. Well, same thing in the Austin track here, in Iron Burns Valley School, that we dug ditches, when I first came here back in the early '70s, we dug ditches for the pipelines. Then they come back in, now the choice is to cut the edge of the ditches, straighten them out, overlay them. It's a lot of labor and tense, tense of work, as opposed to making a deal and overlaying the entire street and the ditch at the same time. That was smart stuff.
Yes, sir.
Who you come up?
I just want to say thanks to Ray. I know he's been part of this community a long time, so I want to clarify something that Bill had talked about. We don't have a subgrade failures here in Clearlake, so the efforts of these gentlemen back in the day did a fabulous job, because we spent a lot of money doing soil testing here on our subgrade, and we don't ever have to touch it. That's why we go in, we grind out, and it's overly right over top of it, because our subgrades solid.
Yes, please. Sorry to keep you waiting.
Henry Bornstein, also from Highlands Harbor, Clearlake. So I just have a small thing, maybe it's format, but I'm passing it along because three or four people have commented on this. When I took, I passed this, you know, the latest version of how someone often knows. I know, I remember when this was done, the last meeting, or maybe the meeting before, when you bolded the graded, the grading things, it's in bold, and nothing else is in bold. Right next to it is a bolded figure, which everybody thought referred to the bolding. Everybody, three or four people thought that. 1.520 million referred to the bolding graded thing there. And then they also, then they were confused why it was bolded, and it just got, it seemed to create a lot of confusion. I don't think it was, I understand the intent, but I think maybe, and they said, "So does that mean that everything else is the paved roads?" And I said, "Well, sort of, except there's bridges, I don't, I didn't know for sure." But if there was, maybe, this goes in line with what Ray said about making it clear what costs are, and trying to, I don't know if you can do this, or it makes sense just to reformat it, so there's the cost for the paved streets, and then there's the cost for the grading of the unpaved streets, and so you can see how they compare, if indeed everything else is, because this doesn't have any, this doesn't have any numbers at all on it, right?
We were concerned about the numbers, you may recall the discussion, because it's subjective, that sales.
Right. So, out of the numbers that Ray was talking about, the cost for the grading isn't down there anymore.
Right.
I think our decision was to not put a specific cost, that way it doesn't freeze us from having that money specifically.
I think it was a good idea, because that takes care of the problem. Ray had about 10 years times so-and-so per year.
And it may just be beneficial to un-bold the words.
That's what I was thinking. Maybe.
Well, actually, what I'm, and looking at it, what he says makes sense. However, I think what might be clearer is to move that information up, up a road, so that it aligns with the road maintenance improvements.
Yeah. It's just a little confusing, just the format, except it's here, but, and anyhow, they were a little, they didn't know why, two to three people asked me this, and I sort of gave them a rambling answer, but why is the first one bolded, nothing else?
Oh, are you asking that?
Well, no, I remember when I was here, I was asked that. It wasn't easy to answer. So I'm not sure, that's just, I wanted to bring that up in case. You know, appearances are so important. I mean, people look at one little thing, they decide, "That's aha," you know, they see one word, they latch on to it, and you don't want to lose the election, because, anyhow, that's just, that's all, otherwise.
We need to try to build trust.
Right. Well, this is really, you know, I mean, everybody's really happy that I talk to people, many of them have, they're very happy to see it's all roads, you know, there's nothing else on there, basically, and there's still, you know, there's still people that ask me the question, "Well, they still could pay salaries for this, right?" And I said, "Well, they can do anything they want that's reasonably directly related fixing the roads."
That's to go to the root.
That's what I hope. So that means that someone, that there's, that after it's built, you have to have someone fixing up something later, so it doesn't go to a pox, so to speak, and that's going to happen, they can come out of this, you know, so.
Well, we have to have a maintenance effort, just as we were talking about earlier.
There's no reason, I mean, people understand that, but there's a lot of, as you know, a lot of distrust, and I think this is, you know, this is probably the best shot you've had so far, and I think it definitely, just having roads, you know, and having it, having the oversight committee, you know.
We need ambassadors, and I appreciate you being there.
Well, anyhow, I'm really, I'm going to be talking to the Highlands Harbor Association office, and see, they're going to be meeting and see if we can, you know. It's not, unfortunately, not completely unanimously in support. You know, there's still a lot of people who just don't trust government, you know, they don't look at it as people at all, they look at it as government or the G, they just don't trust it, so we have to work on that.
You're welcome to come down any time.
I don't, and then they're the government.
Yeah, we are the government. All right, that's all, that counts.
Exactly. Thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am. Thanks for being here.
I just have a couple of clarifications, not necessarily for me, but for the public up there, because I think when I've talked to people, they, I have quite a few that will say, "We already passed a tax."
I've heard the same.
So I want to be really clear that Measure P is not roads, it's public safety, which we've got in our police department, up to staff, which we're all thrilled with, and that passing, or having a percentage of 50 percent did not pass those taxes, because I've been here almost 20 years. We were trying to pass road taxes back then, they didn't happen. In your more current years, you're up over the 50 percent, 60 percent, we're just not at the two-thirds. So I think those statements need to be really clear, we know we're not getting any funds, we need two-thirds vote, not a 50 percent vote. For everybody who goes in and looks at the newspaper afterward and says, "Oh, we got it." No, we didn't. I just want to make sure people clearly get that, because otherwise there's a perception, "We've had it, and we didn't use it." So, and then the other thing, I hear a lot about paving and unpaved roads, I think once we get the unpaved roads where they're drivable again, anything we can do to leverage ourselves to make them paved roads is obviously something that's just an improvement to all of us, so I wanted to.
Absolutely.
And so, rather than just always focusing on the annual unpaved roads, you know, maybe seeing, at the discretion of funding and the council, we'll be looking at opportunities and grants and so forth to augment paving of those roads. Thank you.
Mr. Heron, would you like to address those comments?
Everything you said, we're, everything you said, we plan on doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Scrill.
Well, number one, I'm not that sure that you can pave all of the roads, mainly because in this community, we have homeowners associations. The things with the homeowners associations is that normally in their bylaws, it states that they will pave their own roads. Now, some of these homeowners association, the homeowners will say, "Oh, well, it just went bankrupt." Well, if they did not proper, go through the proper channels with the state to file that, hey, it's still the responsibility of the homeowners in that community, or in that homeowners association. And so, those, or if it's a private driveway, some people think that their private driveway is their road. Now, you can't just be going on to people's property and saying, "We're paving your road whether you want it or not."
And we wouldn't do that.
I hope not. You know, so, I think there needs to be some little research done in regards to what you can pave and what you cannot pave, because I think you could run into some problems. And also, I got a good question for the majority of you. Eight and a half years ago, when we had $3.2 million, which was grant money, and Lake Shore Drive got paved, and the businesses didn't have to pay for it, you had some city council members at that time that did not have to pay for it. But they got their roads paved, and in turn, at that time, some of the city council members that got their roads paved lived in homeowners associations. No, Joyce, they did not. I have checked with neighbors in the place that I am talking about, and they said, "No, they were never asked." And you did not pay when they paved your road.
They paved my road.
They did that because you were going, "Oh, my back hurts, my back hurts, I need my road paved." And your road got paved.
Let's keep it civil and in order, please, thanks.
Mr. Perdok, I was civil, because I could have been a little nasty to.
Okay. That's my job to keep it civil.
The fish at the end.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wanting to comment on this item? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to council, council member Overton, if you here want to comment.
Yeah, I have a question. With this money, we get this approved through the government, is this money that we can use to bond out and get things done more effectively, as far as a broader spectrum, like a whole section of an area? Is that something that can happen? I'm just asking if it could be possible.
It could be possible. That would be a decision that the council could look at.
Okay. Because I just had that in my hand, and I just wanted to ask that question. That's on my mind. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Spatier.
First off, I want to start by saying that the grants that we've been receiving for arterials and collectors, I go to other cities, and our main roads are more than decent. Our main roads, when I'm talking Old Highway 53, I'm talking Lake Shore and Olympic, I go to Napa, I go to Sonoma, I even go to San Francisco, their roads are horrible in comparison to our main arterial roads. And that needs to be highlighted, at how great in comparison we've been holding on to those major roads. Those are our livelihood, to bring in commerce, to get commerce out, and I think we need to make sure and highlight that. And so, all the work that's gone into that, absolutely appreciated, because I can see the difference. I appreciate the comment from Mr. Bornstein, because we asked to highlight that without seeing what it would look like highlighted, and I have some agreeance that it kind of looks like it goes along with what's on the right to it. But there is one thing in there, and I'm not sure if we just never wanted to put it in there, I don't remember us talking about it before, I don't see the word residential roads written anywhere on that whole expenditure sheet. And wondering if that's, I mean, to me, that's one of the biggest highlights of how we can attract attention, because your road has the chance to be fixed now. We're not talking about roads that you may never use, we're talking about your road, and we feel, I believe, as a group, that that's one of our biggest bonuses.
Residential was in there, so.
And so, maybe it's in the, maybe it'll be in the argument, maybe it'll be in the main summary, but I'm not seeing the, I'm not seeing what that will be, and I think that's a really important part to put in there, because that, to me, is the major difference between what we've tried in the past and what we're trying to do right now today.
According to our city attorney, we have a problem about putting, making that kind of a change to the wording at this point, that is something that we can put into the arguments.
And, yeah, so I just want to make sure that that is at least put across clearly when people are reading their ballot handbook and stuff like that, because I'm not seeing it right now. Overall, I'm 100% behind this, but at the same time, I'm absolutely 100% against us failing this, and I hope that every single one of us up here will do what we can to make this pass. We cannot wait another year and miss out on $1.6 million.
I want to hear you say that. Any other council member that's commented on this? Matt Weiss.
I could project, but, yeah, I'm freezing. I did have the opportunity, just so that I'm being forthcoming and putting all the information that I have into the record, I did have the opportunity to speak with a consultant who does consulting on tax measures regarding the viability of passing a tax measure in this climate. He indicated that in the last go-around, 75, more than 75 percent of the attempted measures passed. So he feels like it's a really good climate right now to attempt a road tax, and spoke also with Senator McGuire, who is, has, you know, us in his mind, and hopes that we can make a go of this. So I feel like there's definitely reason to move forward now. I know it seemed a little daunting when I was looking at it, going, "Gosh, we tried 2012, 2013, 2014, 2016."
Not on the council. Every county council member, we tried together.
Yes, and so, I'm absolutely 100% backing this. I think this is the best job we've done thus far. I know I only have four years of experience at this point, and lots of people have a lot more than that, but so far, I think this is the best, the best proposal that we've come up with. And just was reading something in the Press Democrat the other day about their roads, and they indicated that they had spent $165 million on their roads. I didn't even notice how long they had been spending that money, on 130 miles of roads, and that they were going to stop now. I calculated that out. I don't know why I used calculator, because now that I wrote it down on paper, it's pretty obvious that it's more than a million dollars a mile. And I suspect that Santa Rosa's roads had a little higher PCI rating than I've 38. So we definitely have a lot of room to improve here, and I think we're. And I think we're setting up the ability to improve. I do want to suggest that we use someone like that consultant. He did indicate that every measure that he worked on in the past election cycle passed. Doesn't mean we have used that guy. I'm just saying we probably... Not we.
I was going to say, we can't do anything.
I'll take a recommendation that the... Whatever committee decides to take on the marketing for this measure, should it move forward, consider using some professional marketing assistance.
Council member Sabatier?
Yes, I had this question during the break. I was wondering if our city attorney can give us some recommendation here. I'm really interested in looking at the summary and the argument that we're going to be placing on the ballot so that we can get our feedback on the summary and the argument to make sure that the message is as clear and as possible. And what is the possibility of us being... I know our timeline is short. That's why I wanted to ask, what's our possibility of being a part of that process?
Sure, the council very much can be a part of... And this kind of leads into the idea. At some point, I do want to provide the council and staff with the do's and don'ts of what their role is, is appropriate, not appropriate, with regard to campaigning versus giving informational items. What is appropriate for a council is to give the argument in favor if they want to, or if they wanted to do the argument against. In this case, it seems like the council more wanted to be in favor. But in order to do that and to have all five members... You can have five signatures to the in-favor argument, but you'd have to agendize that. So at this point, maybe on the... We have a June 30 meeting coming up if the council wanted to...
Special meeting.
Special meeting. Especially, you could still do the... You can't pass a tax, but you can pass the argument in favor of. At that meeting, at that joint meeting, we have a special meeting, maybe before that, with just the council to adopt that.
Is that enough time between now and the 30th to really provide the argument and the summary?
Well, I think that's all we have. I don't know. We could have another special meeting, maybe the week after, to provide that as well and have the council weigh in on what kind of arguments they want to include. Usually what I have...
Is that scheduled?
July 7 is not a scheduled meeting?
July 14.
14th?
Right. I believe it's due July 15th is the argument.
It's set on the PowerPoint, the 7th, isn't it?
It's the 7th.
Yeah.
If it passes tonight, it's the 7th.
So June 30th would be a meeting. Now, what we could do is, in the meantime, have somebody draft something and bring it to the council's attention and the council discuss what language they like. And maybe appoint the mayor to see it through, finish it, and provide it to the city clerk by July 7.
Still discussing any other...
Could they do an ad hoc committee to meet real quickly on, say, Monday to help put things together and then put it on the agenda for the 30th? Right, too.
Yeah, I mean, it's not on the agenda tonight to ask the ad hoc to do anything, but I think the mayor could, on his own volition, make a decision that he'd like the ad hoc to work on something to provide for the meeting Thursday.
Maybe the marketing ad hoc committee could get together, too.
There you go.
It would be marketing. Again, I'd like to get anyone who is planning to form anything similar to a PAC to be involved in that.
The collection committee.
Yes. Or whatever they want to call it.
Any other comments? I just want to say thank you to the folks again that sat on that ad hoc for our roads. We had a lot of spirited conversations. Hopefully no feelings were permanently hurt. But I do think we had a good product and we came forward. I believe that this road tax measure is different than what preceded it. I think we have a good foundation, something that we can be proud of. And I'm hopeful that... I was very hopeful that we would have more people in attendance tonight to discuss this. We do need to have more ambassadors out in the community that can... That have the knowledge of what happened here and the spirit of this. And while we may not be able to increase our numbers for popularity, hopefully they'll see that we are a council working toward improving safety and equality of life in our city. So thank you all very much for your participation. And at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion. Let me help you.
Mayor, may I suggest you adopt the ordinance first and then the resolution?
Oh, I hope so.
Very well. Thank you for catching that. Let me get to that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve of ordinance number 189-2016, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake, adding Chapter 3-7 to the Clear Lake Municipal Code related to a transactions and use tax to be administered by the State Board of Equalization.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sabatier?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Perdok?
Aye.
Okay. And I will move to approve Resolution Number 2016-24, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake calling for and providing for and giving notice of the general municipal election to be held in the City of Clear Lake, County of Lake, State of California, on the 8th day of November 2016 for the purpose of electing three city council members, each to hold a term of four years until their successors are elected and qualified and submitting to the electors Measures B, W, and X to be voted on at said election, establishing deadlines for direct and rebuttal arguments, providing for the preparation of an impartial analysis, and requesting approval of the Lake County Board of Supervisors for election services to be provided by the County Elections Department.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Sabatier?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Perdok?
Aye. Item number 10... I mean, 11. The consideration and selection of winner of the city logo contest. This is going to take a while.
Should I make the motion now to go past 10?
Is it 10?
Now, I'm hopeful that the committee was able to select the best of the bunch and make recommendations.
Thank you for joining us.
They want change what they got. They want change what they got.
Yeah, 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 the 5. And then the rest, the rest.
Mr. Bolton?
Let me introduce Melissa Swanson, our city clerk, to give this a brief glance.
Honorable mayor and council members, on April 14th, the council gave approval for the city logo contest and directed the marketing ad hoc committee to bring five to ten submittals to the council for consideration. Councilmember Overton also generously donated $250 as prize money for the winner of the logo contest. On June 1st, the ad hoc committee met and reviewed all 21 timely submittals and have recommended five for the council's consideration. The five are... We put five on the PowerPoint for your consideration. All artists that I've been in contact with have stated that they are open to modifications and/or suggestions by the council to their submittals if they are chosen.
That looks good.
Yeah, that looks great. Keep going.
Use the little negative sign or minus. Control minus.
This one is on its side.
Obviously.
So this is one of our... What we call the semifinals or finals?
Yes, semifinals.
That way you should make it bigger.
Here's another one. I just want the citizens to be able to see some of those. You will have copies of it at the diocese.
Do what?
All right. Opening this up for council comments, initial comments. Council member Vice Mayor.
I'd just like to begin by thanking all of the artists for their submissions. And just... I'm just thrilled that there were 24 submissions. Is that right? 24 submissions for this. That's terrific. That level of involvement in city government just... Yeah, that's terrific. I'm excited, and I again appreciate the time and effort from every artist here. Can you roll back through them so we can see them again? Yeah. And I'll hold my personal opinion until later.
Want me to rotate them again, or should you...
No, that's all right. Now we have a comparison. I know, I wish we could sit aside and sign on.
How come now I came out right side up? The other ones came out on their side.
Can we save those when they're in the right rotation? Is there a way to save it? Can you call a script? Okay. It's a PDF. And remember, we need to use these as a patch, correct? For the uniform personnel?
Yeah, this will be something that the logo would be used for letterhead or patches for the police department and for others, and those types of uses.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Types of the vehicles.
Not to rush you, but I would love to hear what the public has to say about this.
Oh, I was just waiting to see what you guys... Are we happy with... Do we want to add any to it that maybe didn't make the final cut? That's what I'm asking. 3, sorry.
Recommendation to committee.
Okay, mic's up, sorry. Yes, right now.
All right.
Make a comment.
They're all great. I like them. I see one thing missing on all of them is our county has a rich history, which predates all of us, our native Americans. And in the pie presented, I don't see any reference to our...
I believe the one with the orange sky does have a reference.
This is the one that we thought represented that.
Well, I looked at that, and I... Maybe I missed it. I don't know.
We've got the same thing. And if that wasn't, we could get something similar to that. Like, that's why we asked if they might do it some tweaking.
They represent a dream catcher or...
Yeah, and that's why we asked if they might tweak them.
I don't know that the dream catcher has to do with our local...
Local.
I think that's more of a southwestern type, Native American.
We definitely discussed that we could put a different symbol on there that would represent our area, and that's possible.
That's what I would look for.
I agree with you.
That's my comment.
But again, I'll be this latitude to add... Okay. So without... Anybody else have a comment? I'd like to open it up for public comment at this point.
I would like to tell you what I like. I actually like this one, and I think the one before it. But this one, I like the way the words Clear Lake were more... It was right across the center, so that was my favorite. But I thought it looked more modern.
This one?
Yeah. Because where the lake, where the bass, and the fact that Clear Lake is so prominent in the wording, it's not kind of hidden. I really like that.
The bassy color? Could that... The bass be...
No, the color, I don't mind the...
To brighten it up?
Yeah. No, it's subtle. Because really, Lakeport, and if you did something with the... If that sun is appropriate to the Native Americans in the community, you know... I don't think they're going to get as picky as some people think. Anyway, that's my comment. Sorry about that. Beth Keiman, City of Clear Lake. I like that one. But I recommend you put a drop shadow behind Clear Lake so that it pops. That's the only thing I can see that it needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
This also is my favorite. But I would like to see a canoe on the water. Everybody knows that there are basses in Clear Lake. But the canoe would indicate the Native Americans. I'm sorry?
Tulip canoe, tulip boat.
A tulip boat.
Okay, a tulip boat, that's fine. But that would indicate the Native Americans. And I like the colors, and I like the fact that it really stands out. So that's my choice.
Thank you. Any other comments? Very well. I'll bring it back. That's member Overton.
Okay, so this is my favorite also. And we did kind of discuss a tulip boat, and one of them. I can't remember, but I like that idea. I do agree. I think everybody knows we have bass, but I'm not necessarily saying we have to get rid of the bass. But I would like to add the tulip boat if we choose this one here. But I do... This is my favorite, too. I think it really stands out. I like the happy colors. And I think that's what we're trying to represent, is that we're spirited, we're a good place to come, we're a good place to come and have fun. And I think this really does just say it all, the rest.
I'm going to nitpick you, but...
Absolutely.
So the tulip boat, if we're not going to bring up the color of the bass, maybe use it kind of subdued as well along with the sun?
Yeah, I think so. First there, but it's not like... What we want to stand out is Clear Lake and the...
I didn't want anything to take away, to detract from it.
Right, right. And but, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
And maybe the fish would need to move a little bit in order to make room for the tulip.
Well, sure, there have to be some adjustments, yeah. But I think it's just kind of like the fish is...
Bring it into scale.
Kind of like the fish is, but it's there, but it's not like popping. We want Clear Lake to still be a popping thing.
You have a comment, council member Sabatier?
As far as for the contest, this one is by far my favorite. I love the colors, and I love the art style that was put into it, the just the lines for the sun and the symbols in the sun and the lines in the water. I just... I love the style. So for that, as far as the contest goes, that's definitely my number one choice. But I love the one above, which is the letter C. And if there's some way that we could incorporate that type of lettering... I recognize that the other one is a full circle. But if there's some way we can incorporate that C into the one that we like below, I would love to see what that looks like. Because I think this is outside of the box type of thinking. And I like what that says when I see that. And so if that was possible to implement within the one below, I would love to see what it would look like.
It would have to be... It would end up having to be a different color, darker. It'd have to be a different color than what's... It would have to be, it would end up having to be a different color, darker, it'd have to be a different color than what's already on there, so...
I'm not sure if it's possible, but I would just love to see what it looks like, just to see.
Yeah, I mean...
Having ordered some patches and my experience, it is, you could actually, because you could frame, frame that circular patch with an embroidered, uh, frame.
That would be cool.
What, what colors are you thinking? Are you thinking like a black?
I'd have to go back and look at, uh, what the other one looks like, if you can, I guess I'm looking at it right here. I, I would say, I, I would say not add
Take the green.
To the colors and maybe using the green from the mountains, since the sea wouldn't blend right into it, and the green's already there within the picture.
It'd be kind of a subtle hat, see.
And if you combine two, if you, if you take that C, you're stealing from somebody else's artwork.
Well, the sea's a sea, it's a letter C here.
I know.
They're still...
We would, we wouldn't be stealing, because we said that we would be looking to see how to create the logo we're looking for based on the artwork that we received.
It kind of closed public comment, but I can reopen it. I'm gonna reopen public comment.
I'm sorry, my eye, I can see it. You can see the sea, so to speak, with the dark on the top of the or, the dark orange. If you just continue that down with the dark, the colors that are there, but darken the blue and the green, and that will give you your sea. It'll be subtle, but it'll be enough to pop it.
I'm drawing the orange, the green, and the blue. It would be something, now you can see the sea.
I, I don't think it's gonna be that big of a difference to have a sea in it and somewhere, I don't think it's gonna be...
I like the original personal.
I, I, I like, I like just the way it is. Yeah, I like the way it is. I think it stands out. I don't think that that sea on it's gonna make it better.
I noticed at the bottom of this, that there's a little copyright symbol and someone's name. What's that all about?
But they made it, that's artists.
So they get to put their name on our city logo?
No, the artist stated that she'll remove that if it's chosen.
She's wanting to know that cookie of ours.
I don't know that she's copyrighted it, yeah, but, I mean, not legally.
Okay, I agree, this one with the sea is very innovative, um, and it actually made my three. I narrowed it. I, I do this every time done. And I really, really like this one with the little filaments here.
Yeah, we went back and forth, can we incorporate something like that onto something like this? So we went back and forth, but we didn't see where to...
This one's colors are amazing, so...
Plus what drove me to it too, was the colors just pop.
And I find that the other one with just the mountains and just, it, it doesn't share enough of the satisfaction of being right here. This is the sunshine, this is the lake with the bass, over there, it's just, it's not enough.
In here, yeah, I think this part out here is great.
It's beautiful, but, yeah.
We're closing public comments. Bringing back to council, I think, uh...
Is there gonna be any limitations as far as color or, um...
I believe there was a discussion with, uh...
Sergeant Snyder, you want to model your patch?
The old one?
Yeah.
Lots of different colors.
Well, I mean, we have a big yellow ring around ours and all the...
But the yellow ring goes around the whole patch.
The whole patch, and then there's dark blue, so there'd be, like, if we saw a blue backdrop, we'd have orange, yellow, blue.
You have a round patch.
The whole backdrop color.
I think you'd end up with a round patch instead of a shield, wouldn't you?
No, it'd still be a shield. I mean, you could put it inside the, you could fill the, you know, you can, since we have California below that, so, I mean... It just depends, because you know, on the embroidery machine, this is when it gets really small, there's fine details, you know, they just start to blend in, and it could look really bad. It'll look good on a piece of paper, but then it could look really bad on a patch.
There are a lot of lines on here, but...
I, I think this is pretty straight line, though. I don't think it's like that, their patch now has had a lot of detail on it, and, and you can still visually see it. This is not as detailed as the patch they have now.
Does it have a preference?
I like this from, like I said, with the blue.
And I believe that during our, uh, committee meeting, uh, Acting Chief Selly was also there to give us some, uh, suggestions on what colors would work well and whatnot, and I believe that this one was a, he said would, would be able to work.
Good, sounds like we're ready to move forward.
I didn't recognize this as a sun, though. Is there a way to redesign this a little bit so that it, it's more clear? Is that a sun? I'm not sure what it is.
I, I personally, it would be kind of good to have the artist here maybe too, uh, because I personally thought that that might have been just his way of saying there's native Americans here, maybe he just didn't quite know what their, something was to put there, but to me, it's like, to me, I think it looks, it's a rising sun of, of, of a native American is what I took it as. But I'm not necessarily saying that maybe that was actually the native American sign, but we could incorporate that at the real...
For some reason, I thought it was a Ferris wheel. Like, I didn't get that at all. I was like, oh, and there's a Ferris wheel, that's fun.
And personally, I would say if we are able to add the tulip boat to it, I wouldn't change anything else on there, because I, I think that it, it gives, it would, it would lack something if it was just an orange sky without some sort of a...
Yeah, I don't think, nothing there, but can it be redesigned so it's more clear?
That's what I would say. I might research what, uh...
The photograph.
What is your guess here, because I'm an expert on...
None either of mine.
But I could grow up with friends, it's a broad tide in my roots, and I've never seen that.
Yeah, but I think we've given our city manager, uh, a good direction to go.
Yep, so essentially, we'll, uh, verify that the sun is a symbol or come up with an appropriate symbol, we'll probably, in coordination with, uh, you know, the...
Mm-hmm, that would be nice.
Uh, and then, um, a subtle tulip boat with the same, um...
Art style.
The art style.
And if it's also possible to, uh, see what it would look like, uh, with, uh, what Beth offered to...
We'll come back.
The drop shadowing.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, did you want the drop shadow as well?
If it's possible to see a version of it with the drop shadow.
Okay, yeah, so what works with the artist to come back, um, if this is who you're, uh, ordering as the winner of the contest?
Yes.
And then, um, before we finalize, uh, an actual logo, that would come back, find approval as well.
Perfect.
When are we gonna have him, or her, uh, for, uh, show up that they won? Let's try and get that person to come to our marketing ad hoc committee possibly, if we can do that.
I, I would love, I would love to do like what we did earlier in this meeting where we gave our achievements and stuff.
Certainly, that they'll be at a council meeting, I mean, that we're gonna do it in public, give them a...
Oh, or you mean to give your award?
Right, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I, I...
I can meet them too at our, at our ad hoc, but I was just wondering, are we gonna, when do you anticipate that we're going to give them their award and, and present it here? Is it at the next council meeting or the end of July or?
Whatever her, uh, I'm assuming that her availability is.
Okay, so you'll always know that, okay.
Great.
I don't watch this hard.
Mr. Folsom, time for reports.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of things. First of all, um, last week I had a very, um, good meeting with the county and with the proponent, proponents of the veteran housing project. That's still, um, moving forward. Uh, it will be going, uh, unless they have any changes, they're gonna be going forward for an extension of the project with the county, I believe July nineteenth at the Board of Supervisors, so, um, that's still moving ahead, so we're happy to hear that. I gave a presentation along with Acting Chief Lieutenant Selly at the senior center last week as well to, um, uh, the seniors to talk about what was going on with the city, and that was, uh, pretty well received. Uh, the visitor center is still moving along. We had the concrete poured out in the, uh, front and the back. We've got the handicap ramp put in and the small patio. Uh, we had a very successful canine dinner that the police department put on, so thank everybody who attended that. We do have the chamber Americana dinner that is, uh, this Saturday night, so just a reminder about that. And then I just wanted to give a, um, public service announcement. Uh, for those of you who are not aware, there is public, uh, there is poison oak in Lake Addy, so just please be aware of that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for fitting that in, because people need to be aware of that. I, I did want to ask, um, since we've moved, we moved ahead and we approved, um, item ten, I wanted to ask our legal counsel just for some guidance for us as we move forward, um, and people are asking us about the, the measure on our road tax. If we could just get some initial counsel, um, from our attorney on how to, how to answer questions and proceed as a, as a counsel.
Absolutely, sure. Uh, as just sort of very brief and generic, counsel at this point, you as individuals, as city employees, you all have a first amendment right to support or, or oppose measures. The uniqueness is you can't allocate government funds or public funds to campaign for it or not, so staff time or council member time on the dais would not be appropriate to campaign for measures. You could certainly provide informational items. So if, as it goes along, the council or staff want to do a town hall meeting, we can talk about the budget and talk about the needs for roads, that's not campaigning, it's informational. However, if outside your staff time or the council's time, you want to join a political action committee, you want to walk precinct, and you actually want to hang flyers that say vote yes or vote no on this, you absolutely can do that, as long as you're not using, again, public resources or time to do so. So that's the, I would call it the nickel brief on it. I'm happy to provide a little more guidance, because then it gets specific about, gonna make sure staff doesn't use even paper or letterhead that, that is campaigning for it. But, and there have been instances in the past that other city officials and city staff members, not in this city, have gotten, you know, dinged by the FPPC for violations of that. We'll make sure that, uh, you're, you're in the, in the right on that, and frankly, if you've got a, in a situation where it's iffy, you're worried about it, you feel free to call me, email me, whatever that goes to staff, or to, to the elected officials.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for letting me ask that. Counselor Moe, do you have a report?
No, just quick, just some thank yous, um, to, like to thank Greg, uh, for, uh, coming down to the senior center. They were, uh, said it was very good. I'm sorry I was not there. Um, and I'm hoping, because I've been asked, because some people were not able to be there, if you would come back. So they heard it was so good that they're asking me to ask you if you would come back, so hopefully you will consider that maybe in September and, and kind of talk about the tax at that time, um, and, and they wanted some more information, so I thought I would ask you. So, um, and they also asked me if our public works, uh, could come down and also talk to them. I mean, these are people who can't necessarily get down to the meetings because it's late and stuff, so they just asked if, if that was possible, so I've asked Doug if you could set a time aside to do that. I'd like to thank the police department for when, after their event, they left, uh, the center with some food, and our, our seniors enjoyed that very much the next day, and they were thrilled with it, so I really appreciate the food that, uh, you know, that they're, um, have provided. Uh, one of the things I wanted to let people know is NCO is giving a produce, uh, away, and it's at the youth center on the first from twelve thirty to one thirty. It does not require any proof of income, you can drive up in a Cadillac, they don't care. It's for anybody in the public, so please feel free, they, you know, take as much as you want, that you can give away to neighbors or friends or use yourself, uh, you know, they're, they just want to make sure that this program goes through good. Uh, all they're asking is that you sign a piece of paper and say how many people you're providing the food for, uh, and hopefully that if this works out really well this year, next year, they find out hoping to do it even more. Uh, so, and they're doing it all around the lake, so I really, you know, please pass that information on to everybody. Like I said, it's no income bear, it doesn't matter what your income is, it's just some fresh, uh, produce out there, uh, to the community. And I think that's, uh, I think that's it for, thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Counselor Murphy, so what do you have?
I completely forgot to say something earlier and I hit myself on the head for it. Uh, I have, um, no report other than going to the, or being a part, since I wasn't here physically, of the ad hoc committee, of the marketing committee that chose the finalists, uh, that we went over today. Um, I like what that committee is looking at and what our future items are as well. I'm excited to, um, to be a part of what it is that we're putting out as far as our image of this city, because that's something that we're all looking to clean up. Um, wish I could have been in the canine, but I'm sorry, I was enjoying France and Italy for that time period, so it was, uh, it was a very...
Just don't make a donation.
Yes. Uh, I, I need to ask consensus from the council. Um, we have passed some, um, bond A monies for certain purchases of properties, uh, and I'm looking specifically at what is our plan and timeline for the Ogulon Canyon property as far as getting that done, moving public works over, uh, and the likes. And so I would like to get a consensus from the council, if you agree, uh, to have a report to let us know so that, uh, we're all aware, well aware.
Just the timeline and what they're thinking the process is gonna take.
Yeah, and possibly the cost of the buildings and whatnot.
Are we a little ahead of the game?
Uh, a bit, I mean, we can give you something real preliminary.
Obviously, when you're ready, yeah, no.
Yeah.
And certainly we know that the best guesses of, uh, the best laid plans will be delayed for many years.
Someone to set up false hope or expectation.
Yeah, I mean, we're currently researching different materials and different types of...
Just an update perhaps. Thank you, Mr. Folsom. Thank you, I can sense.
Thank you.
Very good.
That is my report.
Mr. Ben?
Uh, poison oak, I'm sorry to hear somebody got it. I'm immune to it, I don't catch it, sorry about that. I apologize for not making the last meeting. I also was out of the country. Uh, the pink board apparently was, uh, canceled last meeting for the lack of a court. I will make the next, uh, meeting, and, uh, that's it. I'm back.
Good to have you back. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Okay, I don't have a lot, but let me just go over a couple of things that I get reminded of in my day-to-day, um, life. First thing is, while sitting here at this meeting and listening to the many, many reports that we receive, I just want to give a shout out to all of our staff members. The level of expertise and professionalism that sits in this room every other Thursday with us, I'm in awe of it. You guys are amazing. You, we couldn't be steering the city in a better direction, and I feel absolutely confident in every decision that I make, because I can go to any one of you and get a straight answer, and I absolutely appreciate that. Um, I also sat on, on a much heavier note. I sat on, in on a post-vention webinar, and what that is, is it's how to respond in the, in the aftermath of, um, any suicide attempt or, um, what do you call it, death by suicide. Um, although we haven't had any lately, those after effects can go on for years and years and years, so please, if there's anyone in your life, um, check in with them, even if it's been a really long time and they haven't noticed anything, who is a survivor. Um, if you notice anyone around you who's not as happy, check in with them. Don't be afraid to ask a question. The worst thing you'll get is, no, of course not! So, um, just to be aware, um, even though it's going into the summer months and the sun is out and most of us can feel happy, sometimes it, you, you can still not notice that someone's in, in need and hurting. So, that wasn't that much fun. I did have the opportunity to attend a smart train meeting, and that'll be that train that's going to connect the, um, right now, I think Marin County and Larksburg up to Sonoma County through Cloverdale. They expect that train to be running by twenty eighteen, so that's, that's nice. Yes, well, if you want to go to the game, I guess you're willing to pay him, rather than sit on one oh one.
Or pay fifteen dollars at the game.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly, it'll take you right there. Um, there was one other thing. Oh, I did have the opportunity to sit in on a water use survey with an individual in their home. It was an eye-opening experience and reminded me that in the throes of summer, not only do we want to be careful of heat stroke and make sure we're drinking a lot of water, but continue to save water, because although we had a lot of rain this winter, that we by no means got fully, um, back, back to capacity, and we do have to look at long-term. we by no means got fully back to capacity, and we do have to look at long-term our water usage and how we can conserve that. So, but this house passed a flying color, so yahoo. Other than that, I did attend the K-9 meeting, what a whole bunch of fun. And on that, I'm done. And it's not 10 o'clock.
Okay, I'll be real quick. Thank you very much, everybody, Clear Lake PD that put on the K-9 dinner, what a great program. K-9s are essential in our city, and the money that was raised to support that program is going to a fantastic cost, so for all the businesses that donated items, for the auction, to all the officers, uniformed staff, and non-uniform volunteers that went out and collected it, and did all, everything that needed to be done to put that together, thank you very much, what a great, great program that was. Since I've been to two, that was the best one. So, thanks again, and thanks for being here tonight, sorry, I appreciate it. I can't believe you forgot this, Councilmember Overton. I cannot believe you forgot this. I had the privilege and the honor to throw out the first pitch at Junior Giants, a great program for our youth, the Giants sent up a representative to help us to coordinate it, but really kudos to Councilmember Overton for, once again, kind of spearheading, spearheading this, and seeing that she's got good key people in good key places to see that it happens for the kids.
And could I just throw in that, the kids really appreciated that they had our mayor and somebody from our council, because in the past, we have invited, and that we didn't get, so believe me, that meant a world to these kids, that they had their mayor at this meeting, that was just really helpful.
It was a lot of fun, great kids, and I see a coach and a player probably here, so thanks for being here.
Thank you for coming out, the kids are like, wow, is that really the mayor? So, excellent.
Wow. We have a great city, and it's so nice to see things coming together, that was fantastic. Sadly, for the manager and I, we had to come back tonight for this meeting, because we were in beautiful Monterey earlier this morning, for the mayor's council members and executive forum in Monterey, this, it started yesterday, today, and would conclude tomorrow. Excellent training, excellent training, good information on economic development, good information on community relations with the police department, with a lot of the violence and things that are being precipitated against our uniformed personnel across the country, and ways to break down some of those barriers and stereotypes. So I really appreciate some of the information that was presented down there, I'm hoping that we can have some calm, not just in, you know, Clear Lake, but also across the nation. Law enforcement is definitely different today than it was, you know, 25, 30 years ago. So, with that, I'll conclude, everybody be safe, and look forward to seeing everyone here next week. Thank you.